Yeah. Folks, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Summary of the settlement is as follows. The district agrees to reimburse parent for independent educational evaluations in the area of psychoeducation, occupational therapy, speech and language, and a functional behavior assessment not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars. The district agrees to reimburse parent for privately obtained educational services, including tutoring, reading interventions, speech and language, and occupational therapy in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars. The district agrees to pay reasonable attorney fees in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. That was approved by all seven board members present. Board member Metzer is ill tonight, and board member Leon Vasquez was not present for that vote. With that said, I'm gonna ask our students from John Muir Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? If they would be so kind. Well done, John Muir students. So we will, uh... We're gonna make a minor change to... First, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Seconded, Craig. Small adjustment we'd like to make. We have some students here from Team Marine for public comment. I would like to accommodate those students after the present, the accommodation recommendation. So if there's no opposition to that, we'll approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, so that is approved. So we will now move to approval of minutes from December twelve. We have one set of minutes. Are there any... A motion to approve by Richard, seconded? Anybody wanna second the minutes? Maria? Do we have any changes or comments on the minutes?
Oh, I... Sorry.
We have one, one by Craig. Well, we just have it approved, motion and seconded, so we haven't approved yet.
We're doing the minutes.
Minutes. There was one thing where it was spelled whereas without an A. Near the end of the minutes. It spells whereas, it spells whereas without an A.
On page nine, um, at the, just before section twelve, it's whereas. R H R W H E R E S.
I'll find it for you.
It's the minutes.
In the minutes.
The minutes from whatever, the only minutes we're approving today. So on page nine, it's a very simple, on page nine, just above section twelve, it's whereas, as opposed to whereas. The other thing is, um, I believe it should say on page seven, it says SMMUSD employee sibling, City of Santa Monica employee and SMC employee. I believe that should also say City of Malibu employee. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, so do we have a, uh, approved with those changes? All in favor? Opposed? Wonderful, so the minutes are approved with those changes. Which brings us to our commendations and recognitions, and I think I'm gonna, either Dr. Moore or Dr. Drotti. Dr. Moore.
Good evening, board members. It is a great pleasure for me to be able to introduce Ms. Paula Litt, the principal of Muir Elementary, who then will introduce her team of students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, everybody. We are so excited to be here, like, we're bursting. Thank you for having us, and I'm gonna keep mine short and sweet. I have the honor of introducing wonderful student leaders from John Muir Elementary's fourth and fifth graders. These are elected, uh, student council members who, um, did all of this that you're about to be treated to, all themselves. So without further ado, I introduce you, the members of the John Muir Student Council.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
One second, hold on, we have to wait till the camera's ready, 'cause we have somebody filming you guys. Very important. And do you, do you wanna, the, uh, the little riser there, or no? Okay, always wait for the camera. You ready to go? Hold on, wait for the camera. Most important thing going, are we rolling? We are rolling, go ahead, thank you, John Muir students.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. By Ansel Broadcan, Lazar Johnson, and Naez Prayhan Han, Carmela Rizwala Malaysia Patterson, Malia Dupell, Ben Kanter, and me, Claipe Gershbaum. But Malaysia Patterson sadly could not make it, so then Carmela Rizwala will be taking her place.
Okay. Important contributions.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a Christian minister and activist.
He was an important leader in the civil rights movement from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen sixty-eight.
He protested against racial segregation in, in nonviolent ways. His peaceful tactics helped him earn the Nobel Peace Prize in nineteen sixty-four.
Important speeches.
"I Have a Dream" at March, Washington, Washington DC, August twenty-eight to nineteen sixty-three. "One day I will live in a nation where I will not be judged by the color of their skin, but not but..." But by the col, but the content of their character. I can relate to this quote because my mother told me to always judge people by the, by, not by, by the heart, not by, not by the looks.
"Our God is Marching On," Selma, Alabama, March twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-five. And in a real sense, this afternoon, we can say that our feet are rested, but our feet, our feet are tired, but our souls are rested. I chose this quote because he is showing that they might be hurt physically, but their sacrifice has benefited them.
"Beyond Vietnam, A Time to Break the Silence," Riverside Church in New York City, April third, nineteen sixty-seven. "One greatly concerned about the need for peace in our world and the survival for mankind. I must continue to take a stand on this issue. I relate to this speech because he has faith in what he does, and so do I, and I believe in peace in this world."
"The Other America," Stanford University, April fourteenth, nineteen sixty-seven. "And so today we are struggling for something which says we demand genuine equality. I chose this quote because it reminds me that still today we are, are struggling with accepting people from different countries and races."
"I've Been to the Mountaintop," Memphis, Tennessee, April third, nineteen sixty-eight. "It's always good to have your closest friend and associate to say something good about you. I selected this quote because it's always good to have a friend around to talk to and to be around."
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s lifetime line.
"In nineteen twenty-nine, Martin Luther King was born in Atlanta, Georgia, on January fifteenth."
"Nineteen forty-eight, graduated from Morehouse College with a degree in soc, sociology, social, yeah."
"In nineteen forty-eight, King enters theological school."
"Nineteen fifty-one, graduated from Boston University School of Theology."
"In nineteen sixty-three, King delivers his 'I Have a Dream' speech in Washington."
"Nineteen sixty-four, King wins the Nobel Peace Prize."
"In nineteen sixty-eight, King is assassinated by James Earl Ray."
"How do we honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. today?"
"We honor him by taking a day off from school to celebrate."
"On Monday, January twentieth, you can celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day at the California African-American Museum."
"Every year there's a parade in Los Angeles celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The parade begins at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard."
"The Santa Monica Orchestra holds a special concert honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on January eighteenth."
"On January twentieth, one hundred and eighty-eight, eighteen of national parks open their gates for free in Dr. King's honor."
"Conclusion."
"Like it says in the timeline, King was assassinated in nineteen sixty-eight by James Earl Ray. Location, Lorraine Motel, Memphis, Tennessee."
"In conclusion, King was a peaceful human being who believed in civil rights for all. Even though King got arrested over twenty times, he fought against segregation and racism.
He is still honored to this day."
All right. That was wonderful. And now we're gonna continue with our meeting. Momentarily.
Thank you.
I just remembered theologically, or, and theology.
All right, we have some... We have a group of student speakers who we wish to accommodate, so they can do what they need to do academically, so... Well, there was a misunderstanding, and we were clear about students being given time to speak, but some parents who were driving carpool thought they had opportunity to speak as well, so we've chosen to accommodate them.
Well, I think the, I think, all right, I think all of these people have come to speak on the same issue, and some are children and some are drivers, and so to split them up doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I think we didn't understand that at first, but I think it's in the spirit of moving general public comments up on this topic to now. I mean, that's just my opinion. Okay. Just so you all understand, that, that you're speaking under the category of public comments, and so when we hear from members of the public on an item that's not on our agenda, we can't discuss it and we can't take any action, other than to ask clarifying questions, or briefly respond to a question, or refer the matter to staff. So I just want you all to understand that, it doesn't mean we're not listening. If we don't discuss with you, that's really all we're allowed to do by law. So we have ten speakers, and, uh, so that, that means that you each have a maximum of two minutes apiece. So we can start, unless you have a particular order. I'm gonna go in the order that I've got the chits. With, it looks like, I'm hoping not to butcher your names. Lee Garoon, or is it Gus Run? You wanna go last, that's, I, I...
I can start. Personal, um, experience. I'm Lee. I'm here today because of missed educational opportunities. I'm a mom of three boys. I have a Samo high graduate. He graduated top, uh, two percent of his class of seven hundred and fifty, an awarded athlete, and he got into a great college, so thank you. He's eighteen years old. He knows, uh, nothing about how to be an environmentally responsible citizen. He can't sort his ways correctly. He thinks that campus cleanups are for aesthetics. And he turns on the AC and opens the window. So, uh, he spends so many hours of his life at school. He did have a lesson once about, uh, reduce reuse and recycle, but he never got to practice it. And he saw teachers and educators in the classrooms turning on the AC and leaving the door open. Uh, and he, and he only had one, uh, type of trash can in his cafeteria at the time. And even when there were two, uh, he seemed to see a lot of students just dumping trash anywhere. I also have a kindergartner, and I've been leading the Franklin Green team for four months now, and we started a waste sorting, uh, system in our cafeteria, uh, with support of Carolyn Costner at the time, and a lot of the other Green team leaders. In less than a month, uh, our students are expert at waste sorting. Our donation box is full. Our organics and recycling are uncontaminated, and our landfill is free of methane-causing, uh, organics. And I know that when we give our students the tools and the learning opportunities, they succeed. I see it every day, I'm there every day, and I see it. And, um, the only thing is that a parent or a group of parents can't do it on their own. It's not sustainable. So I'm here to ask for your support. You adopted an amazing sustainability plan, you created and adopted it. That's it? Is that a timer? Really? That's it, just, uh, support it, thank you.
Thank you. The next, let me give you the next three speakers. Kelly K., Benjamin K., and then Andrea Rob, Robinson.
My name is Kelly K. I think most of you know my husband Benjamin already. It's not often that I feel compelled to speak, but as a new SMMUSD parent with a young student, it seems like the right time. Hi. The last time I was in this room was three years ago, when the board agreed to adopt the sustainability plan for the district. I was proud and grateful to know that we were part of this community where he would attend a school that was beginning to take the right steps toward mitigating climate change and implementing a plan to protect our, our planet. Thank you for helping to make the district take these steps. Now that my son is in the district, I'm saddened and concerned that the district now faces setbacks in moving forward with the sustainability plan, beginning with the loss of Caroline Coster. We strive to educate our children about the importance of sustainability, but how can we best do that as an institution when there is no permanent staff in place to implement this adopted plan? Santa Monica is one of the most progressive and forward-thinking cities with regard to programs to help with climate change and educate our community. The state and country often look to us for leadership. How can the district plan to lead our students by example without a sustainable department in place? To say this bluntly, our district is losing money for every minute there is not a sustainability coordinator or department in place. We hope the board will support the district in bridging the gap between the city's actual progress and the district's unrealized intentions. We can't afford to wait three more years, and just like Lee said, it can't be up to motivated and passionate parents to do the educating for our students. What would you like to say, sweetheart? You have ten seconds. You care about the...
We need our schools to not raise money on every fundraiser.
I, I, I hope City TV's here, so I can watch that again, and he can watch that again. Hi, my name is Benjamin K. I'm a science instructor at Santa Monica College, Samo high. I, you guys are, I love you guys. Fact, I'm a faculty advisor, um, of, of Team Marines, some of whom are here tonight, which is a STEAM program that is award-winning on an international basis now. I'm also a member of your Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Sustainability Steering Committee, a member of the Santa Monica College Environmental Affairs Committee, chair of the Clean Beaches Committee for the City of Santa Monica, advisory board member of Climate Action Santa Monica, board member of Clean Drive Santa Monica, science advisor to several nonprofits and a megaphone for the Union of Concerned Scientists in the Climate Reality Project. I'm now above all a daddy of Cody K. and Alison Mara K., shining light on the sea wherever she is. And, um, I'm thankful for my employment here in our district, and, um, my world is now surround sound, SMMUSD. I'm a lifer. I'm, I'm, uh, I wanted to thank you guys, because as said, uh, back on May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, a hundred and twenty people showed up, and they rallied to, to get some action on sustainability within our school district, and shortly after, you hired a super bright and tenacious Caroline Coster who worked tirelessly in a contract position, um, as our coordinator of sustainability efforts. Despite working in this position, um, and, and leading us in, in award-winning steps toward creating a sustainable school district... a sustainable school district, she is no longer with us, and that leaves a lot of concern as my wife pointed out. She led our coming consulting firm in developing a comprehensive sustainability plan, one which established baseline data from which we develop short, medium, and long-term goals to address sustainability deficits in the areas of procurement, educational services, and facilities. I just want to say I hope that you guys, with all your muscle and might, and in a timely manner, can bring her back to us because she's sorely missed. She had a great deal of experience, and we miss her, we want her back, but in the meantime, please fill her shoes with someone who can bridge that gap. Thank you very much.
Andrea Robertson, then Suzie Roth, then Cody Kay.
It's okay, can we switch Suzie and Andrea?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Suzie Roth, and I am the Green Team Lead at Will Rogers. I am the PTA representative on the District Sustainability Steering Committee, and I am on the District's Green Team Committee. This is my third year working on sustainability initiatives, and my goal has been increasing staff, student, and community engagement, awareness, and education around sustainability. I have a certificate from UCLA in Sustainable Business and Management, and I have an undergraduate degree from University of Pennsylvania in Environmental Studies, so I've been passionate about this stuff for a long time, and only three years ago did my children start in the district. I want to thank you all for supporting the creation and adoption of the sustainability plan, and a lot has been accomplished by grassroots, parent-led efforts in the last three years. We've worked closely with Caroline Koster on many site-specific projects, a few of which I'd like to share with you, to show how we've implemented culture change within the community. We realize as parents, we don't have that much access, time, resources, but doing what we can. One of the things we did is that there's so much waste in our schools is we purchased a bunch of sets of reusable plates, cups, and utensils, and set up a system, and in the span of thirty days, these sets were borrowed, returned, reused, twenty times for parties and meetings to divert, that's approximately two thousand pieces of plastic from our waste stream. And that's just one month at one school for a very new program, but to show teachers got behind it, parents got behind it, students were into it. For Earth Day, we did plogging. I don't know if anyone has heard of that. That's a Swedish trend for picking up litter while jogging. We got a bunch of his parents and students out there, and in thirty minutes, we gathered ten huge bags of trash, and that's just one school, one morning, a few, you know, committed parents. We did a costume swap, so we had everyone bring in costumes instead of throwing them away or buying them new. Student, oh, that's it. We do waste sorting. Okay, so start there. Hi, I'm Andrea Robinson. I'm a new mom at Will Rogers. I have two little kindergartners out here eating, so I want to thank you. We're a part of this community and part of the school district. We're thrilled to be a part of it. So I'm going to continue on with what Suzie was saying. Waste diversion is a big thing at Will Rogers, as is energy waste and water waste. We're one of the lowest ones on the list in terms of performance, according to the documentation that Caroline showed us. We need support. We've got to keep these things going. They will die on the vine, and we've got this really educated young populace that is going to grow, and climate change is very real for them. We need to take this seriously, and the one way of doing it is to continue to support the parents with someone like Caroline Koster or someone to take her place. We can't do it siloed out. It needs to be connected. And, let's see, so we're asking for a couple of action items, please. Full-time position, not a contract person, to come in, to create a sustainability department staff, if you can. Caroline did a great job, but a single-handedly covering more than a dozen schools is very, very hard to do, especially if you're a temporary person. So we're actually asking if the board can work with the city somehow to figure out if we could get a staff and a budget for this. Also, could we work with Sustainable Works and the city's Office of Sustainability and Environment and SMC maybe to leverage the local institutional knowledge? And thirdly, prioritize sustainability at the beginning of the district's rebudgeting and restructure time. Since sustainable upgrades equal cost savings, it's over the short and long term, it needs to be involved at the beginning and throughout the district's rebudgeting and restructure, not at the end. Thank you so much. Sustainability is huge in Santa Monica. Let's make it a huge part of our educational system as well. Thank you so much for your time. Can I say one more thing? We, I'd like to submit to the board a list of the projects that are currently on hold that we started with Caroline, that we were going to do, that are midstream, that are, there's some twenty-something of them, that the, all of the parents and who are here tonight are working on, so we really want to see those come to fruition and.
The next speaker is Cody Kay, and then Catherine Todd, and then Isabel Homburg.
Hi. We're back again, and Cody wanted to share a little bit more. Cody, how old are you?
Five.
Five, yeah. And where do you go to school?
I go to Will Rogers.
Yeah? And do you like to do beach cleanups?
Yeah.
Yeah? What do you see when you go to the beach?
I always see trash, and it's not useful for the plastics on the beach because people, it's bad for the fish in the ocean, and, and I want, my favorite thing is I want to put a big wall in front of the storm drain so the trash doesn't go in.
Wow. That sounds like a good plan. I've been trying to do that for years, buddy, and we haven't gotten very much success yet, but we're working on that in our committee. And what, what do you want to be when you grow up? You know what you want to be?
I have too many things. I can't do it.
Oh, really? Yeah? Do you want to help the earth?
Yeah.
Do you want to be a scientist?
Yeah.
Yeah? You want to be a pilot?
Yeah.
Yeah? And, and do you want your planes to run on biofuel, hopefully, and electricity?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I hope I make my own charger.
And what do, what do you think about all those?
I might, I might park my plane somewhere. I might even land on a private, maybe like an alleyway.
Oh.
So, and there's, if, if I could make a little wall with a charger on it, I could maybe land on an alleyway or something.
Wow. That sounds pretty cool. Well, I, I hope.
But I could probably make an X-wing if I have enough skill.
Yeah? Well, I hope everybody on the Board of Education realizes that now as a dad and a teacher in our district, we need to make sure that our lesson plans are catering sustainably, you know, sustainability. Otherwise, Junior here and his sister over there aren't going to have a very livable planet. So thank you. You want to say thank you to everybody?
Thank you.
Okay, now we want to hear from Catherine Todd, Isabel Homburg, and Ansel Garcia Langley.
All right, so we, as Team Marine, are here today to discuss Caroline Koster and the sustainability plan and district sustainability in general. And the sustainability plan, as mentioned before, was helped by Caroline Koster, who is an amazing force for sustainability in our district. And it's very important now, even with the IPCC report stating that we have less than ten years to help mitigate the climate crisis, that we, as a district, that is forward-thinking, help aid the climate by following the sustainability plan. It's very important to follow its plans on waste, water, food, and all the other topics in it. These topics not only help the environment, but they also furthermore provide wonderful examples for the students that don't know about climate change yet, growing up in an era where it's very prevalent. They need to be educated and being shown good examples of how to be a sustainable student, and if the district isn't providing that, then they'll have to learn at a much older age and change their behaviors more drastically. So we need to make sure to follow that in all sectors that we can and implement it to the best of your ability. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabel Homburg, and I'm here with Team Marine. So as you guys have heard, there's many concerned parents, concerned kids, and I'm here concerned students from Santa Monica High School in regards to us following the sustainability plan. We've, as a district, I've seen that we have taken great leaps forward and have made great improvements, and a key component to following these things that have been adapted on sustainability plan has been Caroline Koster. Caroline Koster, she helped us get a working recycling program. She, as you guys heard, she worked with parents and collaborated to get students to become more aware on sustainable, about sustainability, and she also helped, she proposed a sustainability plan, which got adopted previously, and one of the most important, important things that she did was an educational outreach program, and through this, she was able to help Team Marine as a group and inspire us to take action. So we, I, I, as a concerned student, really hope that we have someone that can take on her position, since she was so influential, such a great person, and was moving our district forward to next, to a next level, and this can be seen through the award that we were awarded last year through Caroline Koster's help. She helped us get the Sustainable Quality Award of Excellence, which we were awarded by the City of Santa Monica, and I definitely think it is possible to find someone that can fulfill her position, and it's just key to have someone that can do that. Thank you very much.
Can I move this up a little bit? Thank you. Hi, my name's Ansel Garcia Langley. I'm from Team Marine, a student-run environmental advocacy group at Santa Monica High School, and I'm just, I just want to talk about how in the past few years, we were at a place where we were making tremendous progress, and in certain senses, we are still, but we cannot take this for granted. We must continue this trend. While Caroline Koster is no longer working with us at the district, the work she did is still felt, it has the effect, and there's still plenty of work to do still. Our biggest next step in my mind is youth sustainability education, something we are sorely lacking and which is a must for the future sustainably literate future citizenry, but we need someone to oversee because it's not going to happen unless, unless we do take steps to ensure that these changes are not only implemented, but that they last. So we need someone in some sustainable, sustainability position. And with Caroline Koster's case, constantly worried about unemployment due to her contracted status plus lack of employee benefits, and the lack of power to hold people accountable, she was in a constant uphill battle here, and we should feel lucky that Caroline was with us as long as she was. We are now at a loss, knocked down in the ring in a sense, because she spent two-plus years getting familiar with the history, personalities of politics, and the job experience we can't replace just within our district, just getting to know our community, because that's very much what it is to us. So while it would be nice to have her back, as long as we get this position filled so that we can continue our progress, that's what I think we feel is majorly important. And at the district level, between the plethora of things that the district addresses, now is at the very least the point in time when we should make a space for climate change among those things, because it's a rising issue that I feel like everyone acknowledges. But we want to make sure that our district, which is our community, is up to par with the sustainable progress and efforts that we see at the forefront of this global movement working towards bringing sustainability to youth through education and through being mindful of that education. And I think the only way that we can commit to having that last is through a sustainable coordinator or just having someone in a position as such. Thank you so much.
The last two speakers are Sadie McGee and Shira Blatt.
My name is Sadie McGee.
And I'm Shira Blatt, and we are co-presidents of the Branching Out Tree Nursery at Samo High. Two years ago, my sister started the garden and tree nursery with the help of Caroline Koster, and from the start, Caroline showed nothing but passion towards the garden and supported all of our ideas to bring sustainable gardening to the Samo High campus. When we found out that Caroline wasn't going to be working with any, working in the district anymore, we were extremely shocked and dumbfounded by what we were going to do without her guidance as such a hard-working person she is. She gave us, she gave us various resources that we wouldn't have had otherwise, such as greenhouses and garden beds and things that would help us grow our garden and support sustainable gardening in the district.
Like, for example, something that she did, over the summer, she went to the garden twice a week when we were out of town and just watered, and that wasn't something that we asked her to do. That wasn't something that anyone asked her to do, and it wasn't even part of her job description, but she just did it because she genuinely, genuinely cares.
Since she stopped working for the district, she's also continued to come into the garden while we're there and stayed in contact with us so that we can figure out what to do next without her guidance, because as students, we can only do so much, and Caroline really helped the Branching Out tree nursery. She helped us start it from the ground up, and she's shown nothing other than dedication and passion towards empowering students to be excited about sustainability. I think the district would be extremely lucky to have her return. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. Back to the agenda as submitted earlier, we move on to, sorry, study session, which I believe is Dr. Mora. Sarah's computer is restarting, so we're vamping until the PowerPoint is brought up. I think we're going to be up in a second. You know what, Dr. Mora, I apologize. We're going to move to communications because it's a better use of time.
Of course.
And we will come back when Sarah's computer is cooperating. So we're going to move to student board member reports, and because Ms. Wachtel has no name tag, we will start with her.
Thank you. So I guess I wanted to start off by talking about the Center for Advanced Research and Technology, the visit that I went on last Friday with Dr. Girardi and Maria and a couple other people. It was very, very refreshing seeing the academic learning environment they were working in and seeing the team teaching style that they brought to their school. I thought that it was unlike, I guess it was unlike anything I'd ever seen, and I look forward to the implementation of it into not only Samo High's new building, but to the district as a whole. Moving on, I'm actually, I found out today that Mr. Kay is my AP Environmental Science teacher, and I found out today that he and a couple of the students that I knew were speaking, and I'm very happy that they were able to fight for Caroline Koster, someone who was critical to their sustainability committee. We are, ASB is planning on hosting Black History Month events in correlation to BSUs and the College and Career Advisors Assembly in Barnum Hall. And as far as the mural goes, this is something I brought up a long time ago, the mural to enhance the aesthetic of the ASB room in order to bring more attention to it, because we really feel that it's not being utilized in the best way it could be. We want students to feel it is a safe space during lunch for them to come and not only speak to ASB students, but to anybody there, and if we implement this mural, it might draw attention, and we hope that not only like transfer students and new students, but everybody feels comfortable and has a safe haven. And lastly, Samo High's basketball team will be moving into a more advanced league. I was informed of today, and I'm very excited and sad that we will be having our last game against Beverly Hills, which is our rival school, tomorrow, the basketball game. I think it's at six. And that's it. Thank you.
Is that boys and girls?
It's the boys' basketball team.
So not, girls are staying in the same, probably? Yes?
I am ill-informed. I wish I knew more. But I do know that the big game is tomorrow and people are very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wachtel. Ms. Afshar?
Yes, hello. It's nice to see everybody again. I would like to start with apologizing for not being able to make it to the cart visit that you guys took. But I am working with my ASB class and with Mr. Miller to organize an ASB field trip and engineering field trip up to the school in Santa Barbara so we can get more involved with everything that is happening. And also, ASB has been having a lot of trouble because we are severely under budget. So as a result, we've had to be a bit more careful and we're making some cuts and taking extra caution, which it's not the best, but we're working around it. On a brighter note, we're having our first winter formal a few years, in like two weeks from now. So also, our theater program is hosting Chicago, which is, yeah. So if you'd like to come to Malibu to see it, this weekend, yeah. Today is the first night and then to Saturday.
All right. Thank you so much. We don't have our Olympic representative. Let's finish up our communications, then we'll go to the presentation. Are you okay with that? So let's go to, I believe that's Sarah Braff, SMMCTA. Microphone, Sarah, are you okay? Thanks.
First, I'd like to give a big thank you to Mark Kelly, Adam Panish, Liz Cowgill, Grant Clark, and all of the people on both negotiations teams. It was an extended 18-month negotiation. They've been over 25 times. It took a lot of grit and persistence for us to find a way to meet the best needs for our students and ourselves. So thank you for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the test results that you haven't yet seen, but I thought I'd be responding afterwards, so forgive, forgive me for that. The learning gap is not new. But there are a couple of things I have noticed, both in this data and for the last 30 years. And that is, there seems to be a dip, or we could say an opportunity, at second and eighth grades, that we get this dip that is very hard to come back from, particularly for our groups. So I'm wondering if we could take this data and there's a way to target those two places to find out what is happening there, that students are having such difficulty, and how do we ameliorate it so that it's easier for them to learn and that we don't have that dip that we then have to come back from? So, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. And then, SEIU?
Yes, that's me. Hello, good evening, how are you all? Good, I hope. Happy New Year. It is a new year, yes. I have one thing to report, which is a very big thing. We have come to a tentative agreement and finished negotiations. So I would like to do more of the same with what my colleague here just did, is to thank our teams. We did, we did work long and hard. We came back on the six and we had two meetings that week and we finished and hammered it out. I have to also acknowledge Mr. Kelly over there, who is not only one of the smartest people I think I know, but can also do type notes as he's, as he's negotiating. And it's an amazing skill that everybody should appreciate at some time or another. But anyway, we're currently working on a joint communication to inform a membership of our tentative agreement. We're moving forward with the ratification process. We hope to have that back for you next month, at the end of February, to have it all wrapped up tight for you guys to, to ratify. So, again, I want to personally thank both of the teams for their time, their energy, and professionalism throughout the entire process. And that is all.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate that. Which now brings us back to Dr. Mora and our study session on the Student Achievement Lead Data.
Good evening. Board President, members of the board, Dr. Droudi, Cabinet, and guests. This evening, I will be presenting the Quarter Two Lead Data Report. All of you have a copy of it. All of the data is on the appendices, so that's what we will be presenting on today. So as a district, we engage in cycles of inquiry throughout this year to review evidence of student learning. This evidence includes interim data, quantitative data, but it also includes student work that sites are able to utilize and review to triangulate with the quantitative data that they receive through their interim assessments. So these cycles take place at meetings with district-level administrators, principals, school leadership teams, also known as SLTs, and at grade-level teams and department teacher teams that we also refer to as PLCs, or professional learning communities. So this is a process that we engage in four times a year. The first report that we did for all of you was during Quarter One, which were our lag metrics. And there was a report presented in October and then a follow-up report in December that closed up and shared the dashboard information. So today, we come with our Quarter Two Lead Data. And this data has been reviewed with principals, school leadership teams during their SLT professional learning days, and also with teacher teams. As we think about these pieces of data, we do separate them by goal. So the metrics that we use are delineated here by goal. For Goal One, we're talking about, when we think about Goal One, we want to always connect it back to our local accountability control plan. And that really, Goal One resonates and states that students will become socially just and college and career-ready. Goal Two really speaks to English learners having access to rigorous and culturally and linguistically responsive courses. So within these, these particular goals, what we're looking at is the fall interim assessments that you can find a description in Slide 11. So if you're, if you want to know, well, what are those interims and what are we actually testing? We give you a broad breakdown of what each grade level is using. We also use Fast Bridge Early Reading in kindergarten and Grade One, and e-reading for Grade Two. And then for Grade Six through Twelve, we also include course grades. For Goal Three, which for us is creating culturally responsive schools that have environments that support 21st century learning and deep learning experiences. And you can find additional information in the data slides, beginning on Slide 44. And we are looking at absenteeism and suspension within this respective goal. So when we think about looking at all of these various data points and the feedback and the findings that were not only identified and presented by various stakeholder groups, we just want to highlight a few of the areas. So when we're thinking about areas of success, we're really proud that our participation rates have increased significantly since we first started. Because in order to have valid data, we want to make sure that all of our students are having access to taking this assessment. So we are very pleased to be able to say that that has been increasing since our first attempt at implementing interims. I also want to highlight the fact that our suspensions for possession, use, sale, or furnishing of any controlled substance have decreased compared to previous years, which is a good thing, right? And this also is important to note that our suspension rates are relatively low when we think about the state of California and other districts that are similar. So our suspension rates are already lower. But when we delve deeper, we're able to see that we've seen a decrease in suspension rates. And I also do want to highlight that although we might not see the district-wide gains that we would like, when we unpack our data further and we take a look at sites, school sites, and particular grade levels within those sites, we are seeing gains and successes. So I think that's important to note, that our teachers are working really, really hard to make those changes at their sites. And sites are beginning to see success as a result of their efforts and their work as school leadership teams. But there is still areas of need, right? And as Sarah Braff mentioned earlier, these, these areas of need are not new to us, right? We've been really working on addressing the opportunity gap that is before us as it relates to our student groups, our students with disabilities, our socially-economic disadvantaged students, our English learners, our Latinx students, our African-American students. We're still seeing that there's that opportunity gap. But even with that in mind, I do want to highlight that we are engaging in thoughtful conversations around how can we change this? And those are noted in the promising practices that I will refer to shortly. I do also want to identify that although we've seen participation rates increase, there are still some grade levels that we need to focus in on and figure out what happened, right? Why were there lower participation rates compared to the average? But again, I want to highlight that the participation rates are in the mid-80s or the high 80s, right? So when we think that it's lower, it's not, it's not below 50. So sometimes when we think it's lower than the average, we automatically assume that it's extremely low. However, we do want to get more information in relationship to what was the barrier and how can we address that? We also want to take a look at the fact that we're finding a correlation between students, student attendance and their performance on the interim assessments. So we want to make sure that we're connecting with our students across grade, across schools and at cross-grade levels to figure out how can we more authentically support them so that they're in school? Because we're noticing that if students are not in school, and this is something that we know, that if they're not in school, they will not have access to the learning experiences. Therefore, their learning will be impacted. So that is something that we want to make sure that we're honing in on. The promising practices. So one of the great things that has been, has been resulting out of this work and out of our continued commitment to implementing interim assessments is this loop, this communication loop. So teachers are able to share with us how it is going, if they need more time, if they're finding that there's some challenges with the administration. And because of that, we were able to make adjustments to our window to allow for our teachers to have more time and to make adjustments based on the needs of the school in order to increase participation. So I really do want to highlight that the communication loop we are working on and we're strengthening that. We also talked about how it was really important that we not only just have students take the interims but that our teachers have the opportunities to take a look at these interims, right? That was something that had come up. So we have been really strategic on ensuring that our staff, from our principals to our teachers, that they have the opportunities to unpack this, this information and be able to then emulate or model a similar process back with their teams. So when we engaged in an item analysis, we were able to determine what those next steps were instructionally for students. So we were able to identify that we really want to and need to focus in on depth of knowledge questions that are at Level Threes and Fours. So how do we support our students to have multiple experiences with engaging in more real-world application of the concepts that they're learning in the classroom? And this is in ELA, in the English Language Arts, or in math. Additionally, we reviewed to, what was those, what was the most missed question? What were students missing most often within our classrooms? So that we, as educators, can then begin to think about how do we reteach this concept in a different way so that students will understand what's taking place? And that is something that is a promising practice that we're implementing more systematically at this point in time. We also have begun to identify what is the common academic vocabulary and delving deeper into seeing how does that transfer across content areas? As you know, we've been working on academic vocabulary. So we need to make sure that we're helping students to understand how you can transfer that information across content so that they're not just thinking, oh, I learned this in, in English. I cannot, I can just think about this in my English class and now I'm going to go to my science class and I need to put on a different hat because it doesn't intertwine. But we all know that the ELA and ELD framework says that all teachers are literacy teachers. All teachers are teachers of literacy. So how do we come together to identify common vocabulary that we can all make sure that we're reinforcing and supporting students to see what cuts across all content areas? So that is what, that's really exciting to be able to share, that it's building on the work around academic vocabulary. Additionally, our math grade-level team has really honed in on identified most, more focused IABs. So really, looking at what their curriculum guides delineate and seeing what interim assessment truly fits what is being taught at this point. Because even the IABs has changed, have changed year to year. So this is a resource that the CDE provides for us and they're also making adjustments and refinement based on the input that they are receiving from teachers and from districts. So they've been producing what we term focused IABs, where we can really make sure that we're tailoring it and addressing it and connecting it to the learning that's happening in the classroom. I just want to highlight a few within this slide. I won't read all of them. But I do want to share that within the school leadership teams, we had an opportunity to delve deeper into the math interims. Because that has been an area that we've seen that has lagged behind ELA. So we wanted to be able to provide our school leadership teams with the opportunity to think about how their strategic focus supports math concepts. So how does the work around literacy and academic vocabulary, how can that support students' ability to share and demonstrate their understanding of mathematical concepts in a more complex way? And what came up is very fascinating because SLT teams now began to think more strategically around what professional development opportunities needed to take shape, about what they needed to do next to make sure that students were able to transfer what they're learning around citing evidence to support their reasoning and how does that support the work in mathematics? How does strategies around close reading support students' ability to read a math problem, understand what is being asked, and be able to engage in solving that problem? Because if they can't, if they're not understanding what is being asked of them, then how can they demonstrate their understanding? So it was wonderful to be able to engage in this process and triangulate that data with their site-based assessments and determine what do we need to do next? I also want to highlight that we are finalizing the intervention modules for mathematics that I had spoken to you about in a previous meeting. We are in the very last stages and just refining so that we can begin to launch that in the, in the next few weeks. So that is an intervention that is going to be geared for students that score one or two in math. So we really want to be able to address those needs. And then we have been providing professional learning opportunities for our literacy coaches in cognitively-guided math instruction. And this is something, because our literacy coaches historically have only focused in literacy. But we have been engaging in a transition of how can we expand their expertise so that they can support mathematics instruction? How can we use their foundational skills in literacy as entry points to support math? And how can we build their expertise about what to look for when observing math instruction so that they can provide coaching and support and modeling? So that is something that is also a promising practice. And then when we think about consideration for next steps, I do want to share with all of you that we implemented a tool previously around what to look for when we're visiting a classroom during ELD instruction. So we've, that's been developed, Dr. Tuplin developed that tool, shared it with principals. So principals were, are able to then go into their classrooms and begin to utilize that tool to provide feedback, collect data, with the task of bringing that back at our February principals' meeting so that we can engage in conversations around instruction and what are the next steps and levels of professional development that will be needed around that piece. So because of that, we're interested in developing something similar for math in order to be able to, again, what are we looking for? How can we provide that feedback? And then how do we tailor our professional learning opportunities and target the feedback that's given to teachers in, in the area of mathematics? And then around, we also, consideration for next steps, I kept this bullet, and you know that this bullet was in our previous presentation, "Expanding Professional Development to Address the Needs of Our Standard English Learners." So we still need to do that. It's something that we, we've started looking into but have not launched it. So that will be there and I will be able to move it once we're actually implementing that. But I think it's important to call out that that is still there and it's something that we're working towards. And at this point, I will open it up for any questions and/or wonderings in regards to what we shared with you today.
Who wants to? So Maria will go first. Who else wants to get on the list? We'll start with Maria and then I'm sure somebody will jump in. We'll start with Maria, and then I'm sure somebody will jump in.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for the information. You know, for me, I'm always going through some of the numbers in the appendices. And for me, I kind of honed on, you know, what is it, kids of color, ESL, English Second Language, and also Economic Disadvantaged Group, and African Americans and Latinos. And the concern was when I saw the numbers like for, let's say, eleventh graders or even seniors that had not met the criteria in terms of them being able to be fluent in whatever, hadn't met the criteria, that was a real big concern. Because as seniors, if you don't, you're out in the world, and we have no control of it anymore. So, I mean, if you're still in second, third, fourth grade, you can still catch you. But if you're in high school, you're not going to get caught. You know, you're going to fall through and you're going to be one of those statistics. So my whole thing is I go, I really support a lot of the changes that I think that are coming moving forward. I think Mia, you said it really well. And Mia, I want to say that asked some great questions as a student for future, because she was giving in the eye of a high school student. And it's true, I mean, if we can take on some of the way they run and they spend on a daily basis, you know, going over, meeting as a group to get ready for their students and they can, for their cohorts, talk about those students that are having a hard time and struggling, if we could just basically do that, even if we just would start one time a week. I mean, basically, the late start that we have at all the schools, that was the purpose of it, when it first got started like almost fifteen years ago. And I think it never really was used, I don't think it's being used as that, to be honest with you, because then we wouldn't have that many kids not struggling. So if we can at least use a late start to implement where the teachers can come together and really have that conversation, because the thing was that the group of the cohort of teachers would run through a certain section, and so they would see the same students both from period one through period six, and they would be able to see, does that same student struggle in English and science or math? They would see the same student, if there was, and then they could create a plan. And if not, then, you know, then they would say, well, how come he's doing well in English but not well in over here? So there's a lot that can be done, I think, right now, and maybe looking at that sooner than later, you know, before we even launch some of the changes that we want to get made, because that's already there. I think teachers, you know, especially for those that have been here for more than fifteen years know, this has been really the plan that was implemented many years ago. And I don't think it ever really got off the ground. So that's just my, just what I see it, because at least you're giving them a chance, an opportunity to kind of have those conversations regarding students that are struggling. The second piece of it that we also got to see is the approach and how they teach. Right, I mean, I don't know about you, but as a senior, I mean, as a high school student nowadays, I'm sitting, I did it, but nowadays, who wants to sit there and sit through six lectures a day? I wouldn't. So I would drop out of school right now. I mean, it's boring. Who wants to sit there and do that? That's not the way you teach these days. But over there at CART, it was unbelievable. I mean, you see them coming in and just moving, and they already had their, they have their agenda already, so they don't have to say, like, what do I do next? They know what they have to do. And it's almost like, how do we train our kids so that they're ready to go? And it's not, they're sitting there going like, we're bored, we have nothing to do, but they have something to do. And that's the whole thing, that no child should be sitting there wondering what their next, somebody has to tell them what to do. They should already know what to do. So, I mean, that's a big change in and of itself, but that, again, comes in with the support, hopefully, with, you know, Sarah, with you, and the teachers, that we really have to get them on board sooner than later. Because if we're talking about the gap, it'll always be there unless we have change. We've never had the change until realized how strongly I believe in that, because I've been here the longest, is that we've always had these great reports and we saw the deficiencies, but we never got to the point of solutions, because we never got there. And so now that we're proposing something, that Dr. Drotti and his team with SLTs and with you, Dr. Moore, we're ready to move. And I'm hoping that, you know, teachers, if they listen to this, will move with us. Because this is the only way we're going to really, I think, bridge that gap for future for, and even advance the kids that are already, that are not at issue with any other academics. But, you know, it's, hopefully, we'll move to that. And the other piece of it is to be able to introduce the internship pieces, to allow them to go out in the workforce and be able to do exploration of careers during high school, so that when they're making choices in senior year, they know what to do. Right, you already know the colleges, because you know you're going to do this as a career, and you already know what you, instead of, you know, in the past, I remember, not so much with my daughter, with my son, everybody was applying for twenty colleges, like, twenty dollars, twenty, what is it, twenty colleges times a hundred plus? Who has that money? And then so what? I mean, there's no way, so you get, you know, if we could narrow it down so that parents are only applying for certain schools, because that's what, I mean, that's in and of itself a savings. And the savings, I would say, that instead of spending for that, come and donate it to the foundation, all right, foundation. And we would have money for a lot of other good things. Despite Ben Kay's son says, you know, we ask for too much money. We kind of do, but it's for the benefit of our students, so, I mean, so anyway, that's it for me.
So thank you, Maria. No one else? Oh, you guys know that you guys are totally part of this process, so Mia, Maria.
Yeah, sorry, I actually did have a quick question. I'm not sure if you mentioned it, I'm sorry if I missed it. Who was involved in assessing the interim assessments?
When you're administering the interim assessments, the teachers?
Oh, no, no, not administering. Like, you said, you reworked it essentially, kind of went back in.
Yeah, so what happens is, we're using the interim assessment block, which is part of what the California Department of Education provides as a resource for schools. So what we do is we have teacher teams come together to review the most appropriate examples that are available and select them based on what's taking place in the classroom. So even though we're facilitating that experience, it is our teachers that are coming together and selecting which IAB, that's the acronym for it, which IAB would best suit the learning that is taking place within the class.
Okay, that makes sense. I guess, I don't know if I'm allowed to give, like, okay.
Yeah, please, by name, yes.
I guess I think something that might be beneficial in the future with future reassessments would be to maybe have like a student focus group that you maybe give these assessments to. That way, you can see how it kind of plays out within the classroom. And I'm not sure how you'd select those students, but I think it might be very beneficial. And I think that you could even involve them in critiquing, like, giving them like a little survey of how to go, what did you like, what did you dislike, what could enhance your ability to, I guess, do better on these assessments. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Kiwi, I knew you wanted to speak too, didn't you?
Yeah, I do agree with Mia right now. I don't really see these assessments as all too effective as of right now. That's just my opinion as a student. But also, adding on to what you said about the opportunities for like, volunteer and internship things outside of school, I don't really find any opportunities through the school, or I don't really see anybody like pushing these towards me currently, and I think they would be very beneficial to me. Like, right now, I'm going out and I'm trying to find them for myself, but they're not very accessible. And I would really appreciate if they were more accessible to me, because they would be very, very valuable to me, so.
So I do want to make a couple of comments on something that was shared. So some of the promising practices that I didn't highlight here include the work that we're doing around project-based learning. So as you know, we are having teachers engage in project-based learning cohorts, so we have teachers that are engaging in learning opportunities to really develop projects that provide more hands-on, real-world relevance to the learning that's taking place in the classroom with the outside world. Right, so how is the learning that's in the classroom connected to the real world? And how can students then take action in regards to something that they are interested in? So we are having the teachers develop their expertise in that area. And we also are having opportunities for teachers to develop projects and units of study that integrate what we call the six Cs, critical thinking, communication, creativity, character, citizenship. I'm missing one right now off the top of my head, but there's the six Cs that we are looking at. So they're developing units and projects that really hone in on how are we supporting our students in developing their lens to look at the world through social justice. Right, through developing of character, through their citizenship? How can they solve problems through more creative and innovative ways? So we are engaging our teachers in those opportunities. And in relationship to internships, I'm glad that this is something that you highlighted as an area of interest. I just had a meeting with our Coordinator of Learning and Innovation, Dr. Devon Smith, earlier this week to talk about where are we in relationship to internships? Because what we want to do is be able to provide that as part of our personalized project-based learning pathway, that is a part of San Muay, and to also provide them through our CTE pathway. So we are currently developing, how are we going to be vetting the different community organizations and businesses and industry leaders so that we can have those internships available for our students? So know that we are working in that, in that direction. We're not there yet. We're hoping to be able to have everything in place so that we can begin to launch it to initiate next year, at least with our personalized project-based learning pathway, and extending it into our CTE pathway programs that we currently have in place. So it's exciting for me to hear the interest and know that that is, we are moving in that direction. And there's a lot of support, I know, from the board and from our team to get us there.
So Craig and then Dr. Drotti will conclude.
I just heard something very interesting in this interaction, which I knew but I hadn't thought about in this way, which is, we're talking about moving to 21st century education. If you're teaching traditionally, you kind of have to assess traditionally, because that's what you taught. So the assessments are going to parallel the core education. So the good news is, is we transform our educational practices, the assessments will transform to be seen by all, including the students, to be more effective, more representative, and in some ways more helpful. So that's a neat little thing that I sort of knew, but I think it's worth highlighting that as we transform our practices, the assessments will become more useful for everybody, students, staff, teachers alike, and ultimately to the efficacy of whatever it is that we're trying to teach that's going to be, you know, relevant to the kids in their lives.
Yes, I agree. And I can share with you that those conversations are already happening now. Right, because when they had an opportunity to actually unpack the IABs, they noticed, wait, we're noticing that depth of knowledge level three or four, the application of concepts our students are having, may not be able to do as well. Why? Are we providing our students with performance-based tasks, experiences that require them to integrate and apply their understanding? Or is it just level one, level two? Right, are we just asking them to recall or to problem solve in a very simple way? So how can we create assessments that mirror and really showcase how students are actually taking a more action-oriented approach to their learning? Because the experiences that are being provided in the classroom call for that. So yes, I agree.
So I'm glad you guys are bringing up some great points, so I'm going to kind of tie it all in. I want everybody to look at that cycle and just consider this human behavior in this organization. We have to have something like that first to be able to reflect on it. So for, what we hope right now is that every educator in our system, in conversation with students, in conversation with parents, are talking about what happened here. Why are we still having discrepancies? Are we actually implementing our theory of action that incorporation of social justice standards with deep learning between first century? If the answer is no, then obviously we have to start going in that direction. So tonight, for example, the Center for Advanced Research and Technology in CART, they're going over their interims right now. Their interims don't look like this. There's over a thousand students at that center right now with, not students and parents and different people, where they get to showcase their projects that they worked on for the last six weeks. In there, and I want everybody to understand this, but this is important, people often think these interim assessments are not important. Those students' projects incorporate literacy, numeracy, and everything else at a high level. So it's not just that you don't dismiss the academic skills that you actually teach. You teach it, but under a specific project or a theme or somewhat, so you look at the whole thing. Right now, that's the, to me, that's a perfect situation. We're not there. Right now, we're looking at the interim assessments and what we have now. Eventually, we continue to grow to get to a point where we're actually looking at projects. So that's the whole design behind, at least that's the theory of action that we're moving with.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Moore. And that actually brings us right to the superintendent's report, so you can just keep going if you want.
Yeah, so I'll keep it short, because we have some other stuff to talk about. I think this is really for the community. Right now, I think the state of California is going through some trying times, just in terms of education funding and the rising cost of living. So almost every agency in California in terms of public workers, public employees are struggling with just managing, living in the city. So we're no different. It's hitting all education agencies in the state and us as well. And I think for those of you out there, you've heard or you've read information that we're going through some reorganization of our budget, realignment of our budget, and we're going to try to make sure that our conversations are transparent. One of the things, if you want to learn more, is to tap into your site's PTAs and find out when I'm coming out there to talk to the PTAs about just the state of the budget and how we're about to approach the realignment process. So the more everybody's entombed with what's happening, the better we can make decisions that's, because what we don't want to do is lose confidence with our decisions, and the more people are involved, the better off we'll be, I think, in. So we're looking at this thing as an opportunity, not something to fear, but something that we can lean into and come out better for. So with that said, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. This brings us to our consent calendar. So moved and seconded by Richard and then Craig. Does anybody have anything they need to pull from consent? Are we okay as presented? Yeah, Maria? Eight B one? We can pull all the POs and just do that without Richard and Maria. Yeah, so, okay, we can just move consent as submitted, and you guys can, okay, wonderful. So we have a motion to accept consent as submitted by Richard, seconded by Craig. We're going to, what?
Richard's going to not vote, he shouldn't be the motion maker.
I believe you can make the motion still abstain. I think you can.
You can move it and vote against it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you're not, you're actually the, I don't really think you're abstaining, I think you're accusing yourselves because you might have a conflict which is different. Otherwise, you might, I mean, I'm not saying you do have a conflict. I mean, if you want to vote.
So just to avoid any problem, so let's just say that Craig is moving the consent calendar and Lori is seconding it, we will find out for sure, because that's an interesting wonky point, yeah. Ms. Afshar?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Vasquez?
I guess, is it abstention or recusal? Abstention.
Either way, okay. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that is four yeses and two, I don't know if that's an abstention or a recusal. They're standing because they're, okay. Okay, great. Yeah, it's like six of one, six of the other.
Yes, sir.
Just as a, I just mentioned, that's out of an abundance of caution for my abstention vote, because we do have counsel that has articulated his opinion, opinion for us, that there isn't a conflict on those purchase orders. But out of an abundance of caution, that's the abstention.
Yeah, I think that's the approach we've taken, it's just out of an abundance caution. Why give the, any sort of appearance? So wonderful, so consent is passed, which brings us to general public comments. We do not have any.
We had those already.
Okay, we have general public comment, so there are no more. Which brings to discussion item, are we doing this discussion item tonight, Dr. Kelly? That means we are, thank you.
So before the board is a proposed revision to board policy.
So before the board is a proposed revision to Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures, and it also have before you the administrative regulations. Really, this is just an update to an existing policy to align it with requirements at the Department of Education as well as federal requirements, because it's part of the federal program monitoring required to have a uniform complaint procedures. And so you see, it's pretty much a whole-scale revision, and really aligns with kind of the adjustments that have been being made at the California Department of Education, who are charged with hearing appeals of responses to uniform complaints. So happy to take any questions that you might have about the policy or a regulation.
You don't have, are there, is there, is there anything to discuss?
I don't think so.
Anyone?
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. So that takes us to our major action items. First one is adopt resolution number 1915 commemorating Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Ms. Lieberman?
I'm going to read the be it resolved paragraphs. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District celebrates the life and legacy of a man who brought hope and healing to America. We commemorate the timeless values he taught us through his example, the values of courage, truth, justice, compassion, dignity, humility, and service that so radiantly defined Dr. King's character and empowered his leadership. On this holiday, we commemorate the universal unconditional love, forgiveness, and nonviolence that empowered his revolutionary spirit and speaks to the best of who we are as human beings. Be it further resolved that our schools, offices, and broader community became, become places that embody the spirit of this great American by promoting and embracing reconciliation, respect, brotherhood, and our common humanity, not just today, but every day of the year.
And this would be a roll call? I need a motion for, we need a motion for, I had to screw something up. Thank you. So it's moved by Craig, seconded by Maria. Ms. Afshar?
Yes.
Delatorre? Mr. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Tilden-Jesswin?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that is unanimous. Now we move on to adopt resolution number 1916 in honor of Fred Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties and the Constitution. Do you have it or do you need it? Okay.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Education encourages all schools and teachers to observe the Fred T. Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties and the Constitution on January 30th of every year or the days surrounding it, and conduct exercises commemorating the life of Fred Korematsu and recognizing the importance of preserving civil liberties even in times of real or perceived crisis.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Richard. Afshar?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Tilden-Jesswin?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, which brings us to item 11C, change in management salary, schedule, range, placement. I should have found out ahead who is going to present this to us. Help. Dr. Kelly?
Yes, we're recommending a change in the range placement for this position. It had to do with some merging of positions in terms of the Information Services Director and the Director of Instructional Technology.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Kelly? Is that motion to move and seconded by Richard? Ms. Afshar?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre? Mr. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Tilden-Jesswin?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is unanimous. Which now brings us to item 11D, approval of the 1819 audit. So Ms. Kennedy, are you kicking this off?
I'm I'm actually going to introduce the gentleman that's going to do that. I'm going to ask Mr. Craig Hertzman, Hertzheim, excuse me, to come forward. He's with Moss Levy and Hertzman LLP, our auditors for our 2018-19 audit. Thank you.
Craig, we need to turn your microphone for the for the people at home who are waiting to hear about the audit.
Oh, great. I can imagine that, right? Anyway, again, let me say that my name is Craig Hertzheim. I'm a partner with Moss Levy and Hertzheim. We've been your auditors for three years now. And usually my other partner, Hadley Hui, is the engagement partner on this audit, but he had a previous engagement that he had to go to, so I'm filling in. And basically, I just want to sit up here and tell you, give you a brief idea of what how the audit went, the results of the audit, and then open it up to any questions you might have. And I'm not sure how the page numbers work in your board packet, so I'm just going to refer to the page numbers in the audit if you don't mind, and I'll just go through a brief couple of pages. Page one of the financial statements, the audit report, is our independent auditor's report on the entire engagement, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is what everybody strives for, which means we did not find any material weaknesses or significant efficiencies where we would say that the numbers are not accurate. They totally represent what's what the district has and owes. On page four, I think is important for everybody to look at, because that's the management's discussion and analysis, which is written and provided by your staff, and it's a synopsis of the engagement. It gives you good samples and comparisons from last year to this year, and definitions on why there were changes in certain items, either revenues, expenses, assets or liabilities. It's a good summation, and it also talks about what the expectation is for the next fiscal year, which would be 1920. As we go through, on page 81 is another good summary, and this is a a trend analysis for the general fund over the past three years, plus what's anticipated through the budget for the 1920 year. So you can see where your ADA is heading and where your reserves are heading, how your long-term liabilities either increase or decrease. So that's good to look at for trends, and it'll give you some dollars and ADA analysis. We also have other audit reports beginning at 87. Not only do we do the audit on the the district and its financial numbers, but we're also required to review internal control, report on internal control at over financial reporting as well as federal compliance and state compliance. So beginning on 80, 89, I'm sorry, 87, there are three other auditors' reports that we've provided, one for internal control and compliance over federal money, one on internal compliance, state awards, and one over internal control over the financial numbers. And all three of those reports were also unmodified, which means we did not find any hiccups or problems with the internal controls, or if you were noncompliant with any items. On page 97, which is always important, is if the auditors come up with any findings, especially if there's question costs involved. And we did have one finding, and I think it was brought up on your agenda, that there was with reduced meals for for students that are eligible to receive free or reduced meals. And I think our sample was about 200 individuals. We looked at applications. I mean, we found an issue with seven of them, and I think the question costs were about a little under $3,500. So it wasn't too material, but it's something that we have to report. And then on page 101 is another small recommendation section that just, we feel we need to talk to management about, you know, maybe you should be doing this. We stumbled upon things. We want to make sure that we report to management and the board, things we find out which may strengthen and help the ongoing processes. So after that brief presentation, I just opened it up for questions for anybody.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions? Really? Wow. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold for questions just for one minute longer. Nothing. Great. All right, so movement to adopt, seconded by Maria. Ms. Afshar?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre? Mr. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Tilden-Jesswin?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Well presented, sir. Thank you very much. The motion was from Richard. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Oh, sorry, Lori, do you have something?
No, it's not on this topic.
Great, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Oops. We're through our, oh, okay.
Information items?
No, okay, I wanna, I need to, we need to bring something up, and so some more procedural person than me may tell me how to do it. But we have to go back to one of the consent items, the one that names selects the three new facilities, district advisory committee members, because we did not put their names in. So do I have to move to reopen that or something?
Somebody, somebody who voted in favor, which is not Maria or myself.
Me. Okay, that's what I thought. Has to vote, motions, that's what I thought. Okay, so I want to make a motion to reconsider just the part of the consent calendar, I believe it's item 8C15. And I, we need a second, and then we all need to vote on that again to reopen it, and then I'll, I'll tell you what the names are.
So I moved to, okay.
I moved and I moved.
Craig seconded, wonderful. So do you want to read the names?
So, no, we have to vote to reopen it first.
Okay, so vote to reopen.
Vote to reconsider.
Ms. Afshar?
Yes.
Can we, it still is a roll call. Ms. Vasquez, vote to reopen? Is she allowed to vote for that? Because she, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Lori, and you're a yes?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So now we reopened it. Would you mind reading?
I would like to, I'd like to read the three names that were selected by the staff member and the board, the board liaisons. We had really, I think, really, a lot of really good applications. We have 10, I think. So we, we want to select Jennifer Smith, Amy Bisson, and Alexis Dennis Huether. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that properly. And we want our staff to encourage the others to keep their applications alive, because we really did feel like we had some interested and interesting applicants. But those are the three we selected. So I think, okay, and I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Afshar? Delatorre? Mr. Vasquez? Mr. Tilden-Jesswin? Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that item is approved.
And thank you, Carrie Upton, for reminding us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Upton. Which brings us to, it's going to put in information items are the assignment of board liaisons to our DACs. They will stay the same as the previous year. We have continuation of public comment. There are none. Board member comments. I would like to point out that our process, our three-day process to discuss the southeast-facing walls of MBO Center, we're having our, the, if you go to our SMMUSD website, you will see all the information about Jane Golden and Mural Arts coming to Santa Monica. We have a, we're partnering with the Public Policy Institute at SMC for Thursday night at 7:00 PM for a great discussion of public art in Santa Monica and beyond. Public art as a means of public policy, as a means of reinvigorating communities, restorative social justice. Friday will be small group meetings with Jane and her team. These are people who represent organizations within our community. And then Saturday will be a community meeting moderated by Jane and her team, which hopefully will give us next steps moving forward with that that situation. So we will have flyers and things on the website to give out, we'll share them, but it it's an exciting time for a community that that someone who has, is the preeminent artist of this genre is coming to us to to lead this discussion. I encourage everybody to go. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done in organizing this, and I think it's truly an exemplary process, and I thank you.
Excuse me, do you have something you want to bring up?
Yeah. Yeah, I spoke with a community member that was, has concerns regarding the new services building, the new city services building. It's around so, health and safety. They're doing this new technology, these composting toilets, that they, they said that there could be a health and safety concern with, you know, methane and, you know, the close proximity to Santa Monica High School smell and stuff like that. It reminded me, you know, when we bring new technology in, sort of what we did at Edison with the solar chimney, sometimes we don't, it doesn't work, or there's, there's some, there's some things that might be of concern. So I don't know, as a school district, when a city has a project, sort of what would be the right protocol for us to just, if they have an E, they might have an EIR report, they might have something that can confirm that, look, there's, it's totally safe, we're doing everything right. But I just wanted to make sure as a school board and a school district that we would ask for that type of information to be brought forward to the school district.
I'm gonna look left at Carrie Upton slowly to see if maybe, do you know, you know anything about this, or can we get information if it exists?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll send you an email.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you an email, Carrie. Yes. Okay. All right. That's the right answer.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring up?
That's, okay, so we, tonight we are adjourning in memory of Joanne Bonner-Levitt. Tommy Joanne Bonner was born in 1940 in Marshfield, Missouri, Missoura. She married Michael Van Ness Levitt, now deceased, of Santa Monica in 1970. They had two children who both went through SMMUSD schools. Joanne had a decades-long role in improving the quality of life in Santa Monica. She advocated for children, for early education, early childhood education, for affordable housing, and for social justice. Joanne was a longtime community activist in Santa Monica and positively impacted the lives of our children and families. She actively supported the work of SMMUSD PTA Council, the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica, the City of Santa Monica's Child Care Task Force, Housing Commission, and Virginia Avenue Park Advisory Committee, the Santa Monica Malibu Ed Foundation, our Health and Safety DAC, and Community Corp. of Santa Monica, among others. She strongly believed that parent and family involvement, safe and healthy school environments, together with schools that provide equitable access to opportunities for all students, are key to children's education and strong public schools. This belief led her to serve as president of the SMMUSD PTA Council, a board member of the Santa Monica Malibu Ed Foundation, Chair of the League of Women Voters of California, Education and Juvenile Justice Study Committees, and engaged in numerous local and statewide ballot measure campaigns. Most recently, Joanne rejoiced in the fruits of her tireless efforts to make the SMC Early Childhood Education Center a reality. Among Joanne's proudest accomplishments were the realization of several long-term projects in the Pico neighborhood, the establishment of Edison Language Academy, the transformation of Virginia Avenue Park into a safe, healthy, and fun learning place for children and families, as well as a meeting place for community organizations and community celebrations. Joanne Levitt lived her, lived her passion to improve the quality of life for future generations and received numerous honors that attest to her outstanding community service. And as a result of her efforts, she's made a significant difference in Santa Monica, our state, and the lives of their people. She's survived by her sons and their families. And on a personal note, I would just like to point out Joanne's unbridled passion for education and her positivity that surrounded it. I think it touched us all, and I ask us for a moment of silence in her memory.
Thank you. And with that, our meeting is dismissed. Adjourned. Sorry.